Just. It's you don't believe the code was enforced properly. So now I have to pay for staff services. In the function of an appellate. That that really seems like a conflict of interest in appearance of one. Maybe the ethics board should refuse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
Hi, it's Princess Ivey from Classlin. First time reading this, do you think to address our concern? It's just as easy to revise the definition of applicant to include the language you said acting in their capacity. As a employee, staff member or a member of trustees, because when I read it, it is, I think it is a little confusing.
It's up to the board of trustees and we ask for your advice.
Are you comfortable with the language? Are you comfortable with the language?
It's not just a piece comfortable, I think it's it's the comfortability of every person if the if a regular person, sorry to say a regular person. But a person who's not a lawyer who did not create it, um, if they're able to read it.
Well, yeah, I leave it up to you guys. I was trained as a lawyer and I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean.
It is confusing and read literally, you could imply that. If you own a home in the community and you will fall under one of these categories, you will be your example. If we're trying to avoid some of the issues that were discussed earlier, I'm just making the suggestion that.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Nate Jurgen and I'm a resident of the village and also a former member of the zoning board. Um, and I'm here to comment on this law. I prepared some remarks. Um, but a couple of things, I do think it's a good idea if this law is set to the different land use boards for their um feedback and review as you have other laws. It definitely pertains to them. They have a lot of experience that could help. Um, I am also questioning whether it was the former law, the law that exists or the new changes. Um, I really don't believe that you can make a law that's been contradicted into the state village law that would supersede it. So I think that a good review of both the existing language and the proposed language is important. But I'm going to go back to my prepared comments here. Um, as board of trustee members are aware, our local zoning code governs how property can and cannot be used in the village. Including both commercial and private property, and that's a very big deal. Because my home, my private property, is my biggest financial investment. And I think that's probably true for many, if not most, other residents. It's also my refuge, my safe space. So I take comfort in the fact that as a citizen of the US. I have the constitutional right to appeal any zoning law decision made by any local government. Whether I believe that decision unlawfully infringes upon my use and enjoyment of my property. Or if I feel that the local government unfairly placed a restriction on my property that would not apply to others. In New York State, Citizens Avenue for making a request for an exception to a local zoning law. Or to appeal the decision of a local zoning officer. To apply directly to the zoning board of appeals. There's no other way for us to go. That's it. That's what we have to do. So it's extremely important that the right of all residents to be heard by the ZBA is protected. And barriers are not imposed by the local government. But in reviewing what's proposed for this law, I see an effort to play financial barriers to block some residents from getting to be heard by the ZBA. It's important to remember that the ZBA gets its authority from the state. It functions as an independent body governed by New York state law. And its decisions are reviewed by the state Supreme Court, not by the village. Any New York City, any New York State municipality that enacts local zoning laws must have a zoning board of appeals. And it's set up to protect the exercise of residents' right. Our village's ZBA is a group of unpaid volunteers working for free. Who are well suited to review and deliberate independently on land use matters that may come before it in a public meeting. That is how it was designed and considered by our state. When a resident brings a request for an interpretation of the building inspector's ZBA. The village itself does not need to spend large amount of monies to insert itself into the review. Not sure where the tens of thousands of dollars on ZBA review come from. But the village administration participation is not necessary. I think it is actually inappropriate and is not the best use of residents' tax dollars. Let the land use board do its review. But this village administration has chosen time and again to spend taxpayer monies. When its actions were criticized in proceedings in front of our land use boards. Rather than simply allow the land use boards to complete their reviews without interference. That's the choice of this administration, but it's not required. Sitting on the VBA, I have seen the village unnecessarily insert itself into many VBA reviews due to use of its attorneys and advisors. The village administration is upusing residents' taxpayer dollars to put a slum incorrectly on the scales of justice. Listening to the mayor's remarks at the last meeting and reading his email last describing the changes proposed to this law. These changes definitely appear to be intended to prevent residents from bringing appeals to the ZBA. Either by charging a large fee of that you're capping at $1,000 that they live within 400 feet of the property. Or an untold sum for those living farther away. That is an undemocratic purpose and the proposed change definitely has social and economic injustice implications. It's not fair if residents with deep pockets can continue to bring appeals to the land use boards. While applicants with limited income find themselves unable to afford to exercise their constitutional right to be heard in court. Prior to joining the ZBA, I was involved in a couple of resident appeals decisions made by a former village building inspector. We as a group of neighbors prevailed and those building inspector decisions were actually reversed. Other decisions by the building department have been modified or reversed numerous times when I was sitting on the ZBA. Those were due to incorrect interpretations of the law or or simply human error. It happens. People make mistakes. Uh, this is a function of the zoning board to correct these errors and is mandated by the state. The village puts the bill for the village land use board secretary and the and the ZBA receives a board attorney. But that should be it. Does not need to spend more than that. And although I don't think any applicant should be charged open ended professional fees simply to be heard by the ZBA. I did notice that there's no mention in this proposed law about what happens if the ZBA finds in favor of the applicant. If the zoning decision is actually reversed or modified and it seems that the building, there was something wrong with the building inspector's decision. Does the applicant still have to pay the review fees that were that were asked for in order for it to go forward? Also, I see that the proposed law refers to all professional services involved in the review of the application, including village staff. So I think this is similarly. What Doreen was bringing up, does that mean that the trustees are thinking of charging applicants, tax paying residents of the village? For the time spent by the land use board secretary or for the building inspector for simply processing their applications? Lastly, keep in mind that the ZBA gets its authority from the state. And that is beyond my obligations under New York state law. I hold that it is beyond the village's authority to direct the ZBA to refuse to hear a matter because fees that the village has decided to establish were not net. Thank you for your time and I encourage you to consider carefully consider this proposed law and the economic and social injustice implications of the matter.
Yeah, hey Bob. Um, the applicants, the people who would challenge this, do they have to be residents or could anybody challenge his own decision?
They have to be agreed.
Have to be agreed. So it could be.
Generally means they have to be.
Could be a former resident.
Generally, they have to be harmed somehow by the decision.
Right.
Not. Conceptually, they have to suffer some.
Substantive harm.
Okay.
Not have to live here or they could own property.
You know, property, sure, if you have property that you ever didn't desire here, that might cost you a lot.
Okay.
Don't want to apply to the abstract, now what else is agreed, but they have to be agreed. That's the legal statement.
Okay, that is true.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm David Newfield. Um, I have a few comments. I've been about 25 years on zoning boards. The plan is going to less essential, but I wanted to just give great acknowledgement that I know in the December of 2016, the board. They sent me a published and commented on the law and sent a letter in Mary Wexler, it was church time, myself, I think I. My name was on the letter, but it's a better weapon, I mean, good on being the board. I would think that this matter probably would, it would be really proper to have this public hearing adjourned so that the board. And other boards could have an opportunity to comment upon that. I mean, underneath it all, your bottom line here, what you're trying to do is, I would say, if you're trying to find a way that. Boards need expert advice, that it can pay for, that it doesn't all be on the court. That's the power. Understand that. Boards dealt with that. Court of Appeals in New York has dealt with that very issue in in the leading case. In which it talked about on one hand the balancing act, with on the other hand, I think the words are not paid for. But it's not even the amount of fees. It's the speed of the community. It's citizens have to have access to the governmental function. And the right to have those terms, whether or not in the form of fees fixed by applicable standards. And it said it's basically wherever you're having a vindication of rights. You're basically charging a gatekeeper's fee here and that is a concern and there are constraints. In both Court of Appeals and the Second Department. And leading decision as well by the former president of the Dutch Chamber. The Court of Appeals decision and another decision recently by the Second Department as well. But I think that. It really isn't that simple of an issue. For example, filing fees get brought up. I know when I've been on the Board of Appeals, we've often said, why are there filing fees as low as they are now? They really should reflect rather than. And particularly where somebody comes in and any municipalities do. When you come in and you want to get something done with zoning work with an application. And if you're coming in new and clean, haven't done anything wrong, first that somebody who went, well, I did this all along, got caught down. So now we have to sort of get permission after the fact. Which is much harder to get in the village, have to spend much more time with that. What I'm suggesting is that the filing fees have to also be reflective of a reality. It makes much more sense. And I think so. I think that's the concern. Was made very clear, you can't have open ended fees. Somebody's not going to make an application if they have a right mind saying, well. Now, put down some escrow money and then maybe five hundred dollars, maybe five million dollars. Now, the words are saying you can't do that. That's effectively denying someone the right to come in and use. The zoning board is the issue, which you've created pursuant to state law. You take a look also at some of the, some of the simplification. My main point is, please, I would really request that you let the boards have time to comment on. It happened and without the being, well, there was a problem with that. Obviously not you, but there was that same issue. Um, it says that the boards have to require certain things. They have to require the applicant to file. They have to require that. But in fact, if you read what's in this code, it's it's saying that, except the board doesn't have it in front of it. Because it doesn't get to the board until that deposit is made. That's not logic. Find a lot of logic. Then it says. That the building inspector, when someone files their application, the building inspector have to identify experts or consultants. That the board will need. Well, now think about that program. That's an appeal from the building inspector. To the board, but the building inspector is going to say how much the escrow is and who the experts are. And then only after that does the board meet and I guess it can change that position. I think that what you need to do is have a logical way of starting this with. And it goes in and says, does the board have a uh intent here to do? Uh, expert, advisor, consultants? Let's be practical. If it's a secret matter, secret covers it and allows it completely. It says you can charge it. Wrong. If it's an accomplished matter, it's not even, it doesn't even touch the escrow. They go up as that. If you have another matter that comes before the board. And somebody comes in before work, that's a special permit renewal. So now I say, I don't mind going on with that one. Basically, the thing that says I got permit, I complied with everything, have no police problems, I have no problems. Just want to hear a good extent. I don't think that it really makes sense for someone to spend thousands of dollars to look through it. Um, I think it really is, you should allow the boards to, when they start with matters, you say. What are we going to require there that's different, if anything? And I think that's very, very important to do. Um, some of the questions about what happens if part is successful. Because most, except for special permits, all applications made in the zoning board are fees. So that there are deals for variance, but there are no from the denial. So that's what they are. Now, if if you're going to come in forward. And if like, for example, I think in the last meeting of the board. There was a, somebody had put together a whole application, probably paid an escrow, et cetera. And the board looked at each other, looked, people said, this is, you don't hate her. You're completely in compliance.
That's interesting.
People have, who pays for that and why should that person be paying for that? Um, the open ended next time this goes. I think really what makes it a little bit unusual. You have a real ability here and the Court of Appeals in New York is recognized as a separate power division. You can build here to have chilling of rights. People that want to go into zoning, whether it's open up something, whether open a deli, whether get a special permit. Whether they're one foot off the sideline and they need to get a variance on it. You really need not to be able to take people and say, listen, you can't do it unless you pay for everything. I think one of the cases said, Court of Appeals had said actually that the entire cost of a governmental function. Is not to pass it on because the existence of that government is in preference of the general welfare of the people.
But Mr. Newfield, the situation you're describing now is not covered under this law.
Under what law?
The law that we're proposing, the changes that we're proposing.
The changes.
Is that, I'm good, sorry, please.
I'm sorry.
Is that what you, what you're talking about with opening deli or getting a variance? That this isn't the subject of this law. No, it is. It's not the subject of the changes of this law.
Oh, you're going, just the change?
Yes.
Oh, the only changes that that you have in here then are. That you seem to be creating a cap, a thousand dollars on appeals. If people, if someone owns property, the property opened at 200 feet. That's what I'm, what I read, that's what I said. That anyone who's bringing a matter and feel to be, what, to the zoning board seems, as long as they own the property. Just that they go for a variance or something, or they're going, or they're appealing a special, or they were appealing the denial of some type. I think what it says is, is that they will have, they get a cap of a thousand dollars. You know?
That's, I'm sorry, I just got to correct you. That's not what it says either. If, if, if you're, if you're going for a variance. It's, it's a whole different ballgame. This is just for appealing the decision. Of the building inspector to the zoning board of appeals. It isn't about getting a variance. It isn't about going to get a, it's a, planning to get a plat uh changing. It's just about appealing. The decision of the building inspector. To the Board of Appeals.
I, I had it there before and you define in there the land application, right? And um. I believe that defined it. Don't have it in front of me. I'm looking for it. Believe that talks about it there and go through and it said appeals. I don't believe they defined what type of appeals.
But just let me point out, it's only, only what's involved is being changed and it's the subject of the hearing tonight. Only the bold portions of the law. Maybe yours isn't bold.
So where would, you're talking about the payments of the car? Where's the, there's a thousand dollar limitation? That's not being, that's not.
No, that is, but that's just for, in case of appeal to zoning board, the cost of professional. Notwithstanding any, the land use application, had a real cost professional service reviewed. The office, in case of appeal to the zoning board of appeals, the cost of professional service. Required by the owner of the real property within 400 feet of that property. So if you're appealing something within 400 feet of a property. That's the subject of the permanent issue or a tenant in that property must not exceed $1,000. That's only for appealing that decision.
But this one is, what you said there is, what, what it says is. In case of an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. That's an appeal as a variance. An appeal is a use case, an appeal is an area variance.
Bob, could you explain this, please?
It's not correct. The appeals and variance are two different things.
Appeals and variances?
It's two different things.
Now, the Court of Board of Appeals by state law and and the zoning boards and and.
It has two kinds of jurisdictions. One's a field earthquake and one's variance. It's different. And appeal says the potential law, the variance says you don't have to follow the decision. By administrative, that's the most likely.
I don't know what you're saying, but what it really is, and the authority and all the authority, and actually the law itself says. If you get, if you apply for something that you don't comply with, for example, you don't have the right area or the right duty. You get denied. You're going to appeal that. And you will peel it by asking for that. That's why, that's incorrect. Okay?
Okay.
We don't have to argue about it, but probably have to get 10 eleven. The other thing is, you're allowing, if someone doesn't pay this. They get a lien on their property. It's a tax lien, because it says it's added to their tax debt.
No, sir.
Oh, that's already.
That's already exists, yeah.
So I would have to say that it would be. Well, then, I guess then letting the boards take up what that appeal means, because I would say this much, that would always be to. My tenure on the boards and other members are saying much more stronger than I do, everything is appellate. Where the people, there's an underver of appeals, also known as the border appeal, with the exception, I guess, of special permits. So. I, I don't know. I will, but I can't speak for others, obviously, other members, but that's how we read that section. So I would just ask that, when I think of when you go talk all the reasons, everyone should be on the same page here. Finding a methodology in a way. Um, not to have things identified by people who aren't who you're appealing from. You have to understand, it's only bringing an appeal against someone else, whether it's for variance, use variance, or an appeal of other determination. You're saying that the person that they're appealing from will determine who their expert should be? And so the, it just doesn't make any, they're logical. It doesn't have, in my opinion, with all respect, logicalness to it. Um, I think that this ought to be worked out so that it's smooth. I would urge that you take a look again at the case of that Jewish, which creeped the question of sin God. And the Second Department case, the Court of Appeals and the Second Department, they're all popular. I think you can't have, you don't have over $1,000 and that actually. There is, I did not see a cap on the person beyond 500 feet. Is there a cap on that?
No, no, no. I have a question. So you, um, you asked a few, you, you stated, sorry, not asked, but you stated a few times that it should go. Um, towards the boards and if we have a lot of boards. So would the ethics board be a part of that? Would you include?
I don't, I think this applies. I can't speak, I didn't write this. I, this does, to my knowledge, this speaks to land use board.
No, I understand. I, I was just asking.
It's a good question.
Because I mean.
Based on the way it's written now, no, it would basically be designed for.
Just.
It's because the Court of Appeal decisions on this, because it's pretty digital.
I get the, I get the zoning board, but I was just including possibly the ethics board as well. Well. If, that was what you mean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to. Point something out. This isn't a zoning law change.
It's not change in the zoning job.
Right. And the change, what, what must be, no, no, it doesn't even must be, it says shall uh maybe. Referred to the planning zoning board or changes to the zoning code. Okay, uh, Mr. Tigger.
Yes, um, it's odd at the beginning, you said there was a $5,000 cap on people outside of 400 feet.
I may have missed it.
That was one of the earlier additions.
Perhaps there should be, um. It seems, it doesn't seem to make sense that to limit. Um, comment to just the changes as if they're happening in a vacuum. When you have a whole law that might be. Parts of the existing law might be changed by the changes. So I'm just saying as far as what people can bring up, it seems like. But that would be important also. I hope the board will consider whether there's a benefit to the community. For challenges when the building department. Makes a mistake. I mean, we've recently had. An issue where clearly the building department issued an unlawful building permit. Nobody. That I heard, including the landowners. Attorney or the building inspector. Argued that it wasn't unlawful. So it just seems like to charge for the minimal amount of. Um. Applications that come before the zoning board. Especially if those appeals are acceptable to charge um what could be. An exorbitant amount of money with no cap. Is just counter to what's good for the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else? Okay. From my point of view. I'm a homeowner. And I want to put an addition on my house. And I need a variance to put an addition on my house. I have to go, I have to make an application. I have to provide an escrow. That escrow, it would be to cover the attorney who reviews that and any other professionals that review that. Although I pay taxes to the people who, you know, do the land use in this village. It's a service. This is a service that's provided and this is a fee for a service. We do this all over. Uh, you know, we, we. We then uh are not keeping anybody from, uh, you know, you know, we're not saying, oh, you know, you, you can't have a variance on your house. It's against the law because you have to put a best girl. That, that, that's never been challenged. It's part of the, it's part of the deal. Uh, what we're asking is if you, you know, live within a proximity of the property. And you want to appeal building departments decisions about your neighbor's property, not your property, your neighbor's property. Because if you're appealing the decision about your property, then you're asking for a variance. But if this is an appeal of the building departments on your neighbor's property. That, you know, it's going to cost your neighbor money to defend that. It's going to cost the village to attorney and other, you know. Uh, staff members time to do that, that there's some skin in the game. And if you live two miles away and you decide you don't like what somebody else did in another part of the community. And you want to appeal that, but it doesn't affect your property. It doesn't affect, you know, your, your sightline or anything like that. You would have to pay the cost of that appeal. If that appeal is lawful. So, you know, it, because if, if the applicants aren't absorbing that cost, you all are. And you were all paying for it and then you pay for the litigation which some of this spawns. So this isn't all happening in a vacuum. So, you know, we, yet. I hope that we can look at this as it's a fee. It's a fee for a service. It does not keep you from using that service, but you know, it, it makes you think twice before you, you know. You continue a feud, would it be with your neighbor or, you know, if you have a personal grudge against the building inspector? Because it's something that happened 20 years ago and you don't like what's happening now and it ties up, you know. Meetings and meetings of the zoning boards of appeals. And if, if we allow that to happen, it'll go on forever. It will go on forever. Because, you know, that, that's what happens in this community a lot of times. And that's my view of this. And I, I'm, I'm. I'm hopeful that it passes so that, you know, there's some protections for the taxpayers of this community while allowing legitimate appeals to happen. But, you know, I, I think it's important that, as Lou said before, everybody have a little bit of skin in the game. And it's, it's a fee for a service.
I would, yeah, please. Uh, I would feel fine leaving it the way it was. On that question of who is aggrieved. If it were clear. But when we have cases that people bring these actions. And it's not determined whether or not they're aggrieved. It's not determined whether or not they have standing. And yet the whole process goes forward, costing the village money. And the, uh, and the homeowner who was being a challenged money. And, uh, well, the challenger should have some skin in the game. So that's what I, that's what I, I think. If we were gonna, if we, if that were taken care of. Deciding who could, who could bring these appeals and who was really aggrieved or not. Uh, at the outset, uh, maybe, maybe some of these folks who are talking here about. About the right to, uh, to exercise your, your challenge, uh, you know, in a democracy might have a point. But if, if, if. There's, there's no determination what the standing is, whether, whether you have, have standing to bring the appeal and you could just bring the appeal. And it's costing us money and it's costing the, uh, the, um. Homeowner money, the defendant, then I think there should be a fee upfront. There should be, there should be, because like, well, it's just like parking, like what, uh, Dan Sarnoff says. You know, if you don't put a, a, a value on something, people will treat it as if it has no value. And that's where I think it's happening.
Well, thank you, because we didn't like the.
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, I know, that was for a five minute, that was for. No, no, I know, that was for a five minute, that was for.
Okay.
Please make a brief, sir.
Keep it short, I. Um. Yeah, I just want to clarify. The issue of standing, which is in New York law, you have to agree, it's not standing, agree, definitely agree. And to my knowledge, in three, five years on the board once. And it's, so it's never, to my knowledge, it's never been an issue now, I'm not. Well, I think, remember, this one, but that's the only one I ever know of, there's one where that came up. The other thing is about the fee for a service, the Court of Appeals has actually made a very interesting comment, it said that, um. Indusso had not sought the endowment with mere benefits, it said it depressed the vindication of the right and dealing with the cost that. Or appeals of the world, that a right rather than a benefit being pursued. That is the significance. That's my point, the right to, there is a statutory right for for variance, it's not, uh, it's not a fee for something, you know, it's not, it's not that well.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's why I am. All right. All right.
Uh, then. I would just, if we can, um, just for clarifications for possibly people who are not familiar, sorry. Um, for those, for those individuals who are not familiar with the language, as the gentleman and, um. The lady in back asked for, just for clarification, language on like. Where is it, I have to scroll, sorry. Uh, professional services under professional services.
I'm sorry.
So I think the question, if I could remember, that's what you guys had.
The definition of.
The def- definition of. Thank you.
Or employees that in their capacity, such capacity, that they're acting like, yeah, they're not as an individual.
Yeah. So just identifying that. Uh, defining it.
Yeah, so can you change, I can change.
Please, it can be.
If you change it, would we be able to thought on it, can I? We have that.
No, I, I think it should be changed too, because it was clear before or employee without it.
It, was it clear? Because then it would have been struck out.
No, it's, it said the person or entity making a land use application, but not a board. Which one are you on? Other entity. This is applicant, other entity of the village of the Mariner. So meaning that if there's an application at the zoning board. Um, and somebody from the building department or HCZM or the planning board. Some other department is coming before they're, you you're not going to charge more money for their fees. When you add employee, it sort of sounds like an employee. Could file an application for, sometimes they're called third party appeals because there's, there's A applies to the building inspector for a permit. Gets the building inspector, but it it impacts B, B is the person who's not getting a benefit. Who's maybe aggrieved by. The permit that somebody else got.
I think we could change, change the word employee to agent.
That would solve it, yeah.
I don't think, that's our substitute change. I think you go ahead.
Okay.
That makes sense. What's?
Okay.
I guess I'm just confused that if your intention is.
You're going to speak.
I'm sorry, it was my mistake, I I I motioned to. I was taken there.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused if if. The clarifications of the language is to. Respond to the intent of the law. Why is that a material change?
It's not, basically.
No, you just said.
Yeah, but your change doesn't, changing employee to agent.
Still doesn't clarify.
Doesn't clarify. It says the definition of applicant who's responsible for being charged this additional fee, right? Exempt from that definition, any board member. And whatever the list is.
Or any board member, a board.
Board or agent.
A board.
Commission or other entity or agent.
Okay, what's an agent?
Exactly what he says.
So it doesn't.
Yeah, I think it covers the truth.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, go send us a bill.
So, I, I just. We're adding to this, which is sort of separate and apart, we're adding, including, we're we're, we're including special permit for a wireless telecommunication facility. Um, an amendment to chapter three forty-two of the code, um, and we're clarifying that. It's a perimeter permit, a construction permit, um, under two forty of this code, which is. Is the. Uh, my heart and personal management, so we're basically expanding what a land use applicant, application is. But. I, I mean, I'm not in favor of this law, but I I think there's another piece of confusion here and this isn't why I'm not in favor of it. But, um. In, in twenty-three dash four, payment for the cost of professional services, the new twenty-three point four. Notwithstanding any inconsistent provision of any local code, rule, regulation or ordinance, every reviewing board must require the applicant for any land use application. To pay the cost of the professional services necessary to review the cost of the application. Um, in the case of an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. The cost of professional services required to be paid by an owner of real property within four hundred feet. Of the property that is the subject of a permit at issue or a tenant in that property must not exceed $1,000. So the second portion of that sentence. Refers to the fact that the appellant. Is not the owner of the property that's getting the benefit, that's got the permit. But I would say, I'm with Mr. Newfeld, an appeal to the zoning board of appeals is an appeal from the building inspector. It'd be on my property and I'd be the appellant, or it could be on this person's property and I'm just challenging that. So I'm not sure. And I don't think third party appeal is the right phrase, but it's sort of what we're talking about. So I'm not sure if that's perfectly clear, but my, my point is, my points are different and they're pretty simple. Thousand dollars is not a nominal amount of money, it's a hurdle for some people. If my next door neighbor gets a permit to do something that's too close to my house and I want to challenge it, the thousand dollar fee. Isn't the only thing that I'm responsible for, I have to. Make the application, go to the meetings, make the arguments, I've done it, I know how much work it is. So the thousand dollar fee is just a hurdle that, you know, it's just one hurdle, that's a cash hurdle. But for anybody who's going to kind of take these kinds of neighborhood appeals, it's very, very time consuming. And, you know, you don't have any up, your only upside is not having your neighbor do something that's, you know, bad for your property. But the neighbor has a tremendous upside because they're getting a benefit, they're improving their house. So I think a thousand dollars is a lot of money, um, considering the other amount of work one of these applicants would have to do. Um, and I think that filing an appeal from the determination of the building inspector isn't a service because it's a right. The building inspector makes a mistake and we have had building inspectors who have made mistakes. Um, the, you know, the village isn't doing us a favor by letting us appeal it, that's as a right, we should be able to do it because you can't go to court. You know, in order to go to court, you have to have exhausted your administrative remedies, which means you have gotten, you've got to check, you've got to have challenged it at the zoning board. And get a determination from the zoning board and then one party who's not happy can go to court. But you can't go directly to court, the zoning board is your place of, you know, that's your first refuge. Um, and basically with this fee, you're saying, I'm the government. Give me a thousand dollars or more so that I can hire people to fight your application, you're asking people to fund. The defense of a potentially incorrect determination. And, you know, I think if we looked at the appeals that have been taken throughout the history of the village of the Mariner. Many of them, many have been won by residents who were challenging the government, so it's hard to fight city hall and I think. We're just, we're making it harder to fight city hall and city hall isn't always right. So.
So are we also charging, like, because we also have a new, um. Building expector, like the head of the building department, you know, there's a lot of newness and we're kind of. Blaming things on on up this. Department head and.
This, this is an entirely new, we haven't charged.
Yeah, I.
But what we are doing, Mr. Newfeld's point, we have reviewed, um, not we, not that. But the building inspector has reviewed the fees that have been charged, you know, historically. And I know that she has looked to other communities and tried to make them equitable, so we are bringing the rest of our fees in line with what other communities do.
Mm-hmm.
But this isn't, this is a fee we've never charged.
But this is in line with what other communities do.
I don't know that other communities charge this, I mean.
I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, the, the, uh, the. The can, the next door neighbor. Is not my concern, it's the, it's the drive by, uh, uh, the drive by vigilante that's my concern, so, um, uh. You know, but. We, we could, I, I, you know, we could do a different fee on that or no fee at all, I don't care. But, uh, but I think we've got to adjust this, so we're not, we're not putting the bill for, um, for. Um. Individual obsessions and hobbies.
Great, nice. All right, uh, in motion to close the public here. Yeah.
Oh, so moved.
Second. Okay. Logan, please call the roll. Dusty, rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is for what now?
Close.
Yes.
Dusty Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy. Okay, now I need, if anybody has a want to, uh, make a motion to approve the law based upon the change that, uh. Applicant, uh, section from employee to agent.
So moved.
I'll second them. Augustine? Dusty, is it rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Dusty Young?
Yes.
Dusty Lucas?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
Uh, I've had a request, uh, by a couple of people in the dais to have a five minute recess. Uh, because, uh.
We don't need your calls, we don't, we don't vote on this one, can I?
We just voted on.
We, we. It passed, I thought we just changed the, uh.
Oh, wait.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got confused, I think all of you were changing word.
So. The board is going to recess until. I guess it's ten ten, you can't go by that clock. Be back in six minutes, thank you.
Sure. Uh.
Oh.
Yeah.
I love the water, by the way.
What?
I love the water.
Yeah, yeah.
The only, the only way I can, I can't travel with it. That's fair.
Really?
Because even though it should be simplified. Arithmetic, if I figure out what time it is by call, it never is.
It's a great. But I do. Just at the weather. Place. Questions. Nah. It costs.
You want to go together?
Well, I don't know.
It's a nice offer. I said it nicely. It's going to go wrong. That'll be, you'll fly them. Now it should fly, you see.
What?
Rest in general. Hey, the touch tank is going to be controversial too. I always hate the name of that.
Look at this one.
You called? All right, let me see, let me ask. What's that?
Why you said? Just text me back, yes or no? Please, why I have to tell now? Right here. Let me get five minutes, I didn't know I thought you. Am I sure if the abstract is posted?
It depends on, depends on, I don't know, depends on. You know, freezing. Mary was sitting in, I have a name.
What's that?
Mary was sitting in the park after night, so I wrote there, I like. Said I like the car background a lot better than the library. That's laughing, says I was sucking traffic, so pulled over. He's great, by the way.
We wait.
He's there.
Yeah, I hear from her once in a while, yeah.
She had a baby?
Yeah, no, we know. That's his picture. We do hear from her once in a while. She's been all over the place.
Christie Mason? Yeah, she had a baby, she, I know. Sally, Sally had her main friend, I see the picture, living in California. Back where she came from.
Because Long Island back to California. Peter's from Long Island.
Yeah, that's right.
From there.
Our husbands. Grandparents. Live across the street from my grandma.
Really?
Yeah. How it teach?
That's funny.
Yeah. She was a nice lady. She was a nice lady.
Peter's, Peter's grandparents?
What?
Pete's grandparents, Peter's grandparents.
Yeah. All right, gang.
Fun toes?
What?
And I walked all the way out there. It's not here. It is raining.
Okay.
It's raining. I mean, it's not, it's not bad.
All right, come on, guys. We're not the ones who need break. Just a minute.
I'm, I'm ready.
The man who's about to lose his paperwork.
Call me back to order, please. Thank you.
Both of them down.
Thank you for the indulgence. Continue. We'll try and get.
We can do it a court tomorrow.
Feel for the agenda. Uh, budget transfers. Uh, item two A, resolution authorization to execute budget transfers to fund open budget accounts. This is a thousand dollars out of contingent to a thousand dollars fuel, oil, and lubricants. But have any questions or concerns? They have a motion, please.
Move.
Woggy, please.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's look at this.
Sorry.
Lucas?
Yes.
Murphy?
Hi. Uh, next up, item two B, uh, resolution authorizing authorization to execute budget transfers to, I'm sorry, to funding transfers in Ida contract services. Uh, we, we, after Ida hit, we created a budget line, storm Ida recovery, and we're taking a hundred thousand dollars from that line, and we're putting it into contract services for storm Ida recovery. Questions or concerns? And this is for repairs at Volunteers Firehouse, which is still, it's open, but still limping.
Generator, gas line, generator on the back, all emergency.
Okay, I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Uh, yes, Woggy, please.
Trustee is rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, manual vouchers tonight are eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, and they are all for New Horizon Communication for online chargers and data process and service for various locations. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
And what, what we did, on the left hand side, you do motions, right hand side, you do seconds, then you switch it around.
Not switching. And then we do.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep our free form.
Okay, Woggy, call the roll. Trustee is rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Hi. Uh, next up is resolution approved ordered vouchers, and tonight's grand total is nine hundred and sixty three thousand five hundred and thirty one dollars and thirty one cents. Questions or concerns?
No.
Great. I need a motion. Woggy, please.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yeah.
Lucas? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I'll please pass this down to Mr. Fusco. Item three A on the agenda, there is none. Item four A, uh, review of village code to include requirements for fair and affordable housing for all zones in the village. Okay, uh, this is scheduling a public hearing. Uh, I think that this is a good idea. Thank you, trustee Lucas, for bringing it up. Uh, a long, long time ago, and it finally came to fruition in the past couple of months. Uh, and this will schedule the public hearing for, sorry, I've not seen it. Imagine it's, yes, I'm sorry, it's March twenty seven?
Yeah.
Uh, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion, please? Call, roll.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing on P L L K rezoning of Hunter parking lot. Uh, this is actually an important matter. Hunter parking lot, can I call? Hunter, Hunter parking lot across the street is a two story structure. It was built, uh, I believe sometime in the nineteen eighties. Uh, it's been falling apart, uh, probably since the nineteen nineties. Uh, it's got a lot of, uh, structural issue. But, you know, uh, I put this on the agenda a while back because I think it's, it's a good spot for affordable housing. Uh, the main impediment to affordable housing is always the land, because the land in these communities costs so much. And it is hard to, uh, then build the housing and get a mortgage if you have to pay for the land too. So since the village owns the land, the idea is in the future, uh, after we rezonate, to put out an R F P for developers to rebuild the parking lot and also to build affordable house. And it would be all affordable. It wouldn't be one of these deals where it's ten percent affordable or twenty percent affordable. This would be all affordable, uh, that would reach down to people who would eighty percent of the median income, sixty percent of the median income, and forty percent of the median income. Because if you're not doing that, uh, you're not really protecting the diversity of this community and allowing the people who built the community and the people who, uh, want to stay in a community, any opportunity to stay. Uh, it's very expensive. The median, the eighty percent median, uh, means that you're making ninety thousand dollars. So that's not a starting level job. People start out at forty, fifty thousand dollars if they're lucky these days. So hopefully, uh, this will be come to fruition sometime in the future, but the first step is to rezone the property. So this would, uh, the law is there, and this would schedule a public hearing on that law for, uh, for the twenty seventh of March, another public hearing. Uh, I will make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Fusco.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you all very much. I think this is a big step for the village. Policy to install solar panels on future roof replacement for projects in village-owned buildings. And this was, uh, something that, uh, trustee, uh, Young, uh, argued for vociferously and energetically, and I think it's a good idea. No, no, no.
Not this one.
Uh, so, we, if the, the village puts up a new roof or a new building, uh, you know, we, we want to make sure that it's, uh, solar adaptable.
Or repairs?
Repairs. That.
Makes any changes at all.
Any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Call the roll, make the motion, somebody, please?
Oh, so moved. Set it.
Woggy? Trustee? Is rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Mayor.
Hi, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's why you've been waiting the whole evening.
Oh, bro, I'm sorry.
Oh, you could have, like, done that.
Yes, I am. Liam, come in. I just want to make, so, just the wording that came up there. Are you committing to make, to install solar or just to have it as possible?
I think we're committing to install solar. Committing to install sol- solar whenever we're doing anything to a roof. In other words, we're building a roof or, or in other words.
Putting a new roof.
The installation of solar energy generation equipment to be included to the maximum extent practicable.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yes.
That sounds, that sounds more committed than it, I mean, that is more committed than it actually sounds.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yes.
So look, I understand what you're talking about. Good, good practice, maybe. Is there funding to install solar? When you're considering doing something, is there something budget for that?
Um.
I think we're always looking.
Oh, 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 what you're saying is, are, is it being fun, is this, did the village set aside funds to do it?
Yes.
Or are we finding, like, funds to?
Right.
So it's either set aside or find.
Good concept, but unless you have the money to back it up, how does it happen?
Okay, I mean, my, my, my feeling is that, uh, the, these are always things that eventually pay for themselves, because it's a revenue generator. It, it displaces utility costs and, uh, and in the case of, uh, of a larger array, uh, you could actually sell the, uh, the,
Excess.
The excess.
Okay. Woggy, call roll.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, the next is an agreement with Southeast Consortium of the Special Services. Uh, all communities are obligated, uh, to provide, uh, disabilities, uh, back decades ago, uh, Mamaroneck, uh, Town of Mamaroneck, Eastchester Pelham, uh, Bronxville, Largemont, Porchester, uh, Ry Brook, Tuckahoe, Harrison, and Scarsdale all got together and formed a Southeast Consortium so that we can do that, uh, actually better and cheaper and give better services, uh, to disabled people at a much better base for taxpayers if we were doing, uh, as a consortium than it would be if we each had to do it individually. So just, uh, you know, re-upping our membership in that, which has been, uh, you know, decades long, and cost the village of six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, which is, you know, nominal these days. Uh, I will make that motion. Please call.
Trustee's rolling?
Yes.
Read? Young? Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution setting sewer rent fee, let's just adjoint water work. Uh, I'll give a brief explanation and then, uh, I would hope the village manager expounds upon my explanation. Uh, the village is obligated to, uh, do millions of dollars in, uh, very expensive sewer repair work. Uh, this work should have been done decades ago. Uh, the can has been kicked down the road successfully and the, this year, and, okay. And, like, and, you know, they said, the work section, depending, any civilization, sanitary sewage. Can't get rid of your waste, uh, breaks that mighty. We have been funding this through a fee that's based upon water use.
Uh, may have some connectivity issue in the courtroom.
That's good. This is important. So, you know, you can control your costs by obviously conserving water. And it shifts, uh, that cost residents to businesses, uh, and it also picks up something that the tax code doesn't pick up. Picks up churches, uh, because they have to pay for water fee. It picks up schools. Uh, it picks up the Westchester Water Works, the Westchester Sewer Treatment Plant, which uses a ton of water. Uh, all of these folks are non-taxable, but they have to pay their water fee and they have to pay the sewer rent fee. And this is something that was enacted by the Village of Mamaroneck years ago, was enacted by the Town of Mamaroneck. The Town of Mamaroneck is about a third more than what we've been charging for years. Uh, you know, it was talked about raising this before, and previous boards didn't want to raise it. And now, you know, we, we're at a point where we, work has to be done. And, uh, it, it's, it's important, uh, to do it. And Jerry, what would you like to say?
Mayor, um, since twenty twenty, since, since May of twenty twenty, we've, uh, we've been working on a, uh, tour rotation project that's, uh, going to be somewhere very close to nine million dollars and, uh, so far, um, we'll have, uh, that completed about five and a half, about seven million dollars. Yeah, while, um, these large projects are required by consent order, they, uh, also require a significant amount of administration. Because they're involved, they have, um, legal aspects to them, they have, uh, reporting requirements, they have a lot of, um, things that are typically not associated with a project. You would think that just an engineer or someone like that, uh, would be involved in that, but that's not the case. There's a lot of individuals who work for the village who are involved in this, uh, in this project and the rehabilitation, the mandatory real, real, rehabilitation of our, uh, of our system. In addition to that, you know, this is an adjustment in, in, uh, in the rent fee because the Town of Mamaroneck currently is forty percent higher than we are, and the Town Village of Harrison is twenty percent higher than we are. So, as you said, it's much more equitable to have sewer rent fees than it is to allow the taxpayers to pay for the costs associated with the administration and repair of the, uh, sewer system.
And then, uh, village attorney, uh, could you speak to the crudiles that the Village of Mamaroneck has over its head with the consent decree?
Sure. The village was sued on many other municipalities, uh, years ago regarding the, uh, state of town regarding this charges into a sewer, including another round of that, which, uh, they decided blames in part on the village and the other municipalities failing to maintain their sewer collection systems. The result is that the, uh, water is getting into the sewer system, it's called implosion, two sources infiltration. They have pipes and illegal connections, creating more sewage, more volume that overwhelms the facility and available rains overwhelms the facility and part of the whole of that. And one of the other environmental, uh, is that sewer gets out of the sewer pipe. So, uh, the village in twenty sixteen, I believe, settled this law, meaning save the sound by agreeing to a number of things, one of which was to basically completely rehab the entire sewer system. Buildings did not act quickly in regards to that. Uh, a few years ago, saved the sound threatening to, uh, gemac the federal courts have a court hold the village of contempt for failing to comply with that. The consent order that he agreed to, uh, and so we've been negotiating that ever since, but knowing that the consent to be required, that the changes, these repairs we made, the village started, and, and the village manager is very active in pushing that forward to a, a conclusion soon. Uh, and I explained earlier during the work session, we saw a few items in the new consent decree to discuss. I'm hoping to bring that to you for discussion again in a couple of weeks. Uh, but at the time, this work is improving, is, is, is going forward, and it's costing a ton of money. So, and we have this work private for wire.
And steps on.
No, no debate about this. That's.
All right. Everybody in the board have questions, concerns?
No questions.
I need a motion?
Oh, um, we have, um.
Oh, okay.
Good question. Could we just amount of money, because we're going to, uh, we get bonds? In bonds be done to cover the amount of money that we have to supplement?
Look, we take a bond.
We are doing bonds for it? So. Understand it's part of the budget, and I understand that process because I, I understand what you're saying with sewer rent fees and all that, but realize too that if you look at the lines on your taxes of your own inclusion, right, you're already paying for maintenance of the sewer lines. What's the percentage increase? What's the percentage increase that?
Uh, 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 just sorry, correct something please, because you're paying for maintenance of the sewer lines, all of us sewer workers are paid out of this fund.
I get that.
So, what do you mean? I mean, so what we're doing is having to increase the cost of this fund. The three workers who are currently employed by.
Other being paid out of the sewer rent fund?
Already.
On, on the county tax bill, Mr. Mayor, uh, there is a sewer.
Yeah.
For the county system. This funds the local maintenance of our system.
Yeah.
Where's Dan? I hear his voice.
He's over there.
I'm in the ether.
The, the lower right window over there.
Um, what's percentage increase?
I think it's ninety.
Ninety.
What? Like as I.
Ninety percent?
Yeah, ninety percent.
So, what's the current sewer rent fee?
It, it depends upon your water suit usage.
Per cubic square foot or how many do it?
It's by gallon. It's by gallon.
It's currently point zero zero one four five and it's going up to zero zero two six nine.
So.
So is it point five?
This, this would probably cost the average taxpayer about eight dollars a month. On their work.
More, of course, not less.
Uh, come on, dude. I'm not nasty, but come on. Uh, but i- if this was on your tax bill.
Yeah, you don't even have to go there.
No, I've got it because I'm there, uh, it would probably cost you about two hundred dollars a year.
It's probably, depending on your usage. To use.
If you, if you're constantly in a tower.
Delivery charge for like twelve dollars and thirty-five cents without water being used, but whatever. Please, thank you.
All right. I need a motion. Oh, you're sorry.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say what I said in the work session. I, um, I under, you know, we, we haven't been charging enough for this, considering all the I and I we've had to do and that. But I do think a ninety percent increase is kind of a shock. And this got proposed on Friday and it's Monday. And it's going into effect in the April water bill and I think uh, we're, you know, I think it's an interesting concept to allocate salaries of the manager, deputy manager, secretary, clerk treasurer, the deputy treasurer, the village engineer and the DPW foreman, in addition to the three people who actually are dedicated to working on the sewers, but um, it's just, it's a, it's a novel approach. I'm not sure it's, I'm not, I mean, I don't know, I don't know that it's a good or a bad approach and I think, I know we have to do something, but I think we could have done a better job educating people and I think, um, you know, once, I mean, as Jerry says, we're gonna at some point when we're not we're doing these major I and I repairs, how are we going to fund these salaries? And I, 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 I'm sure there will be a way of doing it, but this is a whole novel way of approaching our budgeting and it might be a great way of approaching our budgeting. But I think we would have been better served to think about it a little bit more than a couple, than, than two days. So, that's all.
I didn't, um, can I say something?
Yep.
Okay. So I didn't say this in the work session, but I'll say it now, um. Is it possible so that we don't run into these um incidences again where we don't give enough time to whomever needs time? Um, that we give enough time to the public about whatever fees that we may be imposing on them or um.
How do you want, how do you want?
Possibly like a month's time. Like this is maybe like a two week turnover time, but a possibly a month's time with education. And even if we have to repeat it at two board meetings, that's fine. I don't care about repetition personally, but um, but we can't say that we didn't tell. And if we didn't add it to, if we didn't add it to, uh, thank you.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the resolution?
Move.
Second.
Walk. Trustee is Rawlings?
Yes.
Does it read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you all very much.
That's it?
No, no.
Oh. Thank you very much.
I know.
Even though I'm staring at you, Jim.
Uh, we, we, we're resolution scheduling a public hearing on the tentative budget. Uh, and when, when do we schedule a public hearing? March twenty seventh. March twenty seventh. Okay, uh, Jerry, where does the budget stand right now?
On Friday, Mayor, we posted the tentative budget with a one point one six percent increase. We are three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars under the mandatory state tax cap.
Okay. Thank you, because uh, there was erroneous information being shared before. Okay, uh, I need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
So moved.
Second. We're busy meeting. Uh, call the roll.
Trustee Rawlings?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
So, the budget is up now, we should say that. Was scheduled to go up Monday, but it's already up now. Um, and this is not the only time we'll be discussing it. We adopted in April, so it's just starting the budget process. And there's lots of other budget work session meetings.
Uh, resolution authorizing acceptance for a bill. I don't have the resolutions, anybody have it?
I don't have it.
We're gonna hold on this?
We're gonna hold that.
Hold it.
Enhance nine one one, we talked about this uh, at the uh, work session. Basically, just renewing the village's uh deal with the county to county provides uh the nine one one system. Uh, it expired a while back and then we just got the contract from the county. And uh, I want to thank the county for the great work they do on the nine one one system, the emergency system. Uh, for every community in Westchester County, it saves us all a lot of money. Uh, I need the motion.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor? I, yeah. And I'm gonna add an item to the agenda.
No, wait, don't tank.
That's thanks.
It's such like, I don't have that.
I, I.
Oh, I did it, I'm sorry, my, my mistake.
I, the guy who says I should know.
Uh, resolution of acceptance of the two hundred fifty dollar donation from the Cutter Island Colony uh, to the touch tank at the Marine Education Center in Harbor Island Park. And if you haven't been to the Marine Education Center, I advise you to go, it's a great experience. It teaches you about the environment that's around us. If you have small children, it's, it's a, it's a good diversion for a few hours, especially if you have uh, one child at the soccer game and uh, the other child uh, wanting something to do. Uh, so I'll make a motion that we approve the donation.
So, yeah.
But you said Paul.
I'm so sorry.
Trustees? Rawlings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, so we're gonna add to the agenda uh, to. I need, I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of adding the items to the agenda?
I, I.
Okay. And what we're adding to the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed local law A that uh, provides a tax advantage to volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. This was at the regular meeting and uh, I noticed that uh, the town of Ry uh was omitted when it should be town of America slash town of Ry.
Mayor, on that?
You may.
I would, I would change, this is paragraph C. I would change it to read the village clerk treasurer is responsible for buys the settler of the town in which the property is located, I'd read that.
With that change, I will make the motion to schedule the public hearing uh, for March twenty seventh.
Second.
Somebody need to get Dan a piece of water.
Uh, the second by Mr. Young. While you call roll.
Trustee is Rawlings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Yes, Mr. Rooney for round two.
Right. Seven o'clock for five minutes.
Oh, I am, believe me.
Sorry, man.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, since I'm here, I might as well call out that you voted on the law and I want to read it. And the positive professional services provided by the villages. Professional staff will be at hourly rates established by the village manager based upon the actual salary benefits paid by the village. Scenario, so when a village staff member airs in following code, another village staff member can receive payment by the opponent's escrow money. And my comment was, if this is not seen as an appearance of a conflict of interest, it sure looks like it to me. I stayed around because of the gauges to um, point something out about that. USGS, while it might be expensive, when UG, USGS does its gauges in the rivers and they also deploy gauges for storms. Like if you're having a hurricane, they'll throw one in the river and, you know, take some information. But these continuous monitoring stream gauges, when there's a situation that there's a problem with the gauge, they come and deal with it. When there's a situation where you need information to set the height of the river that people are going to be notified, they are scientists. They also come down to our community after it floods and assesses the flood months. So I know you think it's expensive, but there's a lot of sciences involved with having gauges in the river. Um, I wanted to point out in twenty sixteen, the village prompted, we would have had three gauges installed. No cost for an operation and maintenance of sixty thousand seven hundred dollars a year. Um, but that was in the backup materials when you guys reviewed this last year and I don't know what kind of money um, USGS was talking about. So if you can uh, explain that to me per gauge, I'd appreciate it here.
I don't have the information from the jury.
I just remember you did surprise me.
So the other question I have is from the National Weather Service we indicated earlier. They're gonna install gauges or the village is going to install them ourselves?
That's something that they.
We don't know.
We don't, we haven't gotten that far yet. We, we told you that before. Nothing happened in the interim.
So, we know they're less expensive, correct? No?
W- w- we, we know that what would, that what was presented to us wasn't acceptable because it didn't accomplish what we were wanting to do. They don't mitigate floods in any way, they just tell you.
Gauges don't mitigate.
No, they don't, that's what we're interested in is flood mitigation. So, so we want, we want uh, equipment that can work in that effort. So, uh.
Gauger will never mitigate floods.
Yeah, I don't.
But they, they do two things. They warn people and we have flash flooding in our village. You know, it's, it's, we're, we're well aware that, you know, in two seconds flat, we could have ten feet of water. Okay? You can set a gauge to a certain level. Because when a rainfall hits a certain area, if it hits the gauge and it is at that area, you can give people time to get out.
I understand. Uh, we weren't happy with the product they offered.
And, and it, it didn't give you real time.
Yeah, uh, it, it wasn't, it just wasn't, 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 didn't seem to be worth it for what they were.
The information that you get is every fifteen minutes.
No, that's not what the guy said when he came to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we were surprised too.
The man was here during.
We, we weren't, we just, we, we were shocked and uh, and we didn't, we didn't go for it.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
So I had a lot, a lot of conversations and they did a presentation of our person's law in twenty sixteen. I don't think that information, I'll have to check and see if things changed. I'll get back and talk to you.
The other thing too is that it's, they're there. Maybe, maybe I'm being naive, but it's their equipment. They use the information, uh, I mean.
No, you want the information.
Well, it's through them.
Why do we have to pay for it? That's the other thing.
The point is, is they work with you so that you can become, quote unquote, water managers. They, they also inform you, but I'm not gonna give.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
That.
All right.
As far as uh, the permits are concerned, isn't it flow across uh, in January? But the permits for dredging, we have permits from and who's, who's from, what, what kind of permits we're receiving? And who do we have permits from?
Would you like?
Yeah.
We have approval from the Army Corps under permit number three. And then we have uh, approval, we have an approval from the DC under the general permit.
So, here's a plan to do all areas of the village, is there a map of, of what's being done?
They provided us the areas, they came here, they walked those areas and they set limitations. Two hundred feet from any pulvered or.
I'm familiar with H one three. I'm, I'm sure.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean that to.
No, 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 I, I see by saving time.
Okay.
All right.
But I'm asking, does the village have a map of the areas that are being dredged? I mean, they pointed them out to you.
They did. They provided us a map.
So when the person, here's another question, when the person is going in the river to do that work, how do they know? Does someone have to walk through the process?
Yeah, it's, it's managed by our village engineer.
I'm sorry, during you, you have five minutes as well, I'm sorry.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it is.
It went by fast.
I didn't hear it.
I did hear, I'm sorry, it was, it was a while ago.
Your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
All right.
Twenty-five, four, Garrett, Rochester. Uh, um, it's town government social board. Okay, you know, you had a lot of people here, you had to explain yourself.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it. You have to make decisions as board, you have to always agree. Jerry is a good man. I'm glad you guys kept him. But again, look at other, look at other counties, look at Michigan, look at, or look at West Palm Beach. But look at their boards. This is how it's supposed to work. You're not gonna get it right all the time. There's also, you know, conflict is inevitable, but combat chosen. Right? And that's what you, you, you saw social media for a week. She had everybody up.
Mm-hmm.
Come here and it was minority, it was chief. So don't let that dissuade you from doing your job. And uh, just keep it up, all right? I'm glad, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go.
Thanks, thank you.
I said, no one comes here to say you guys did a good job.
You're all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. All righty. Uh, let's see, we're moving. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure what it says, but I do feel. And Jerry? I have some sympathy for you as a man who sent a few rash emails and stuff. I do not feel that the whole process is well played as well, village, and I think we could probably all agree to that.
Yes.
And Jerry, I think you may, you may have lost some people.
A lot of my fault, yeah, I agree with that.
Not um, necessarily all those people who didn't came, said they were speaking, didn't. But just people who've served on boards and things like that, so, you know, hopefully going forward, you can uh, you know, work to resurrect those relationships. To the extent that your complaint is about how long it takes to get things done around here. I'm going to try. And um, you know, and I don't think, but it, you guys have a hard job. A lot of things to consider. So, uh, I appreciate that things will take time. Um, like to say to the board that maybe you could have handled the process a bit better, but taken some time, but the decision you made, Jerry, was actually courageous. Because the simple thing would have been was to say, that's it.
You're right.
So, uh, I can only agree to say that I think uh, I'd like to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
And I believe you're all working in the best interest of the village. And uh, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liam.
Uh, report from village manager?
Mayor, there are two items uh, that we need to file for the record, one of the, the Halsted Avenue Safety Improvement Projects. Uh, the other one is the bait shop. It's listed as an RFP, but we ran out of paper. Um, we're not for RFP, the same individual who's running it now. Um, was the only um, uh, person who responded. And so, uh, we're happy to say that the shack at Harbor Island Park will continue for another year. And uh, I think he does a good job and I know a lot of people.
He does.
I do have um, a report that um, I've been asked to, to um, provide every, uh, every meeting, um, so the river. The river, the river levels have been, have been up for the last few weeks. Um, to a point where it slowed our, our river maintenance operation. Uh, so we've had the um. We haven't had uh, the ability to do as much as we wanted to do. Uh, as I reported earlier, the Emergency Action Plan and Maranic Reservoir Dam Inspection and Maintenance Plan. Which was due many years ago. Um, has been completed. We contacted John Smith who came back from vacation today from the D E C. And uh, we'll be providing that to him by the end of the month. We do have a meeting scheduled with our consultant this week. The village engineer and our consultant will provide a one-page summary of the report for everyone on the board uh, for March twenty seventh. I guess we'll just distribute it. We don't necessarily have to make it an item unless we want to make it an item. So, really up to you guys. As I reported earlier, um, G E I is actively fini- finalizing a ten-year dredging application. Submission on March ninth, uh, Friday, the village was approved for a sixty day extension by the Department of State. Uh, who is Hannah Wiley, uh, regarding the work required to complete the arduous application process. So our consultant, our G E I, uh, asked the D O S to, for the extension. I just want to point out that the Department of Public Utilities Management Chair was copied on that. I have no update from the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, and I reported on the um, the proposed. The posted twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tentative uh, budget. I do have. The email that I sent on March third that I want to reread and, and expand upon. And it's about my um, public apology for the harsh and inappropriate emails that I sent. No, there's no excuse for that kind of behavior. Um, it's been a tough couple of years around here and uh, there's a lot of people who have a lot of opinions of me. I'm really sorry about some of the things that uh, um, I may have said or insinuated uh. During that, uh, during that, those emails and that we. It, it's hard to, to manage uh, a village from day one when one of the first questions um. I received during the interview process is why would you want to work in such a divisive environment? I should have picked up on it then, but I didn't. And really, it, it really, it really is a tough place to work and. And I do have, I do have, I do have this flaw. That I want to protect my employees all the time uh, from that kind of behavior that comes our way. Uh, but at times it gets to me as well. It does really get to me. Um, and it's very difficult to continue to operate at a high level and expect a high level while I'm. Um, dealing with a lot of things that come my way, you can. By some of the, the few individuals who came up tonight that it's um. You know, it's, it's not an easy place. Um, but that doesn't. That doesn't excuse anything. Um, if you want to say I'm publicly sorry to the board. I know that some of you are pretty upset at me. I, I, I deserve that, but uh, I will try very hard to make it up to you. And make sure that um, things are changing and we're looking forward. I'm not gonna stop the high level. The high capacity of work that I'm doing, but I am going to um, consider that I've planned out.
Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate your apology and me, I accept your apology. Uh, I was uh. I was upset and miffed. But at the end of the day. I felt like, well, the day before yesterday, I was positive it was the right choice. Uh, to retain you as the village manager. And every once in a while, I've been known to lose my temper to it. And uh, you know, it's, it's not my best quality. Uh, but I really came around. After a few days of uh. Sitting with it to make a decision about what's best for this community. And apart from, you know, anything else, I think that you're being retained here and continuing the high level of work, as you said. Is what's best for the village of America. Uh, and I appreciate that and I appreciate the difficulty. Uh, you know, I did, I, I've been doing this a long time. And uh, you know, I've never seen the ranker the way it is now and uh. You know, you know, folks uh. Folks coalesce in social media and uh, use it like a bludgeon. And uh, you know, they, they, they don't uh, really care about being too accurate. And uh, some very unkind things get said. But you know, for a person who runs for office, I, 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 I should have to expect that. But the, the people who work in the community, uh, that's an added burden to you and your families. But I appreciate your apology. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, thank you. And uh, I echo what Tom said, uh. I was pretty steeped too.
I heard you were seeing director from you.
Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're, we're just going forward now, alright?
And as we should, moving forward.
Report from the clerk treasurer.
Yes, Mayor, please advise there'll be a taxing sale on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three in the apartment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Augie.
Uh, report from the village attorney.
Look at you, um, look at you trying to move, move the meeting along.
Commissions, boards and committees, uh, minutes of board trustees, work session, the regular meeting of February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Uh, minutes of the Arts Council of January thirtieth. Uh, twenty twenty-three, minutes of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee of July twelfth, October twenty-fifth. November twenty-second, January seventeenth and uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes of the zoning board of appeals of December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two and February second, twenty twenty-three. And minutes of the Boards of Architecture Review Meeting of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, before we adjourn tonight. I just want to mention that March uh, is International Women's Week. Am I right?
This is.
This is. And uh, you know, we, we have been blessed in this community uh, to have some fine-serving. Uh, uh, women and uh, it's become, you know, not, you know, a look at the wall back there. And when uh, Susie Oppenheimer was uh, elected, I think she might have been the first female uh, to be elected to the Board Trustees of the Village of America. And then we continue on a wall. We have my friend Debbie Chapin. Then we continue on and we have Kathy Sable.
As mayor.
Those are the mayors. Uh, we have plenty of trustees like Malani and Nora and Kelly Winstrup and there's a whole uh, slew of trustees. Uh, that uh, I, I don't want to uh, miss anybody and then hurt somebody's feelings, but uh.
Possibly we could put in the village, um, I was about to speak to Robert.
Yeah.
But we could put in the village newsletter about the people, women who have served on our board, past and present.
And I, I'd like him to check. I'm pretty sure that the uh, first one would be uh, Ms. Oppenheimer. Uh, back in, I think she was elected in nineteen seventy-seven.
You can look to the historian.
Yeah, you can go to, right, we have a story. Okay, so we hope that the tradition continues on. And uh, we hope uh, that everybody tonight is safe and sound. Uh, it's eleven o'clock uh, here and uh, if you're driving to work tomorrow, it's gonna be very sloppy. So please uh, be careful. As I taught all my children when I was teaching them how to drive, the only way to drive safely in snow. Is to just drive slowly. There's no other way. So please be careful out on the roads tomorrow. Thank you all. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night.
Because there's always some guy with four wheel drive.
Fascinating. She's interested in history. And there was Westchester A to Z. Yeah, so it's not, and I don't know. She'd love to go there. That's awesome, yeah.
Oh, Augie. I gotta give you the other book.
Oh, and Augie, I got something for you. But I, I'll have to wait, wait to give it to you.
What?
I got something for Augie, but never me.
You, you don't smoke too much.
You're right.
First of all, maybe we should stop having public hearings like five and back to back. You know, one meeting. Everybody in their momma want to talk about something, so.
Sorry. Yeah, get a list. I, I, I started calling people, but I didn't.